Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order. We open our meetings with a prayer and the pledge of allegiance. Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. We know that you are with us at all times and all places, if only we turn to you in faith. As so, we turn to you now, seeking your continued blessings on those of us who have chosen public service, as well as those members of our community here with us tonight, joining us in our deliberations and decision-making. We ask that you give all of us patience and the commitment to respect and to listen to each other. For the members of this commission, help us always be mindful that we are public servants. Help us to hear with our hearts and to think clearly and reasonably. Help us to have the vision to look at the issues before us with wisdom and the determination to do what is best, even if it is not easy. Guide us in all we do to work for the common good. We ask your blessings on those who support and contribute to the work of this commission, knowing that without their diligent efforts, our work here would not be possible. Loving Creator, we pray all these things in the name of Jesus and all that is holy. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May we have the roll call, please?
Peter Hugendike.
Present.
Danny Wilcox. Danny Wilcox. Absent. Van Sands. Dwayne Owens. Dwayne Owens. Absent. Eric Carlson. Eric Carlson. Absent. Mike Buck. Mike Buck. Absent. Roger Burton. Kevin Kirkwood. Deanna Shot Grace. Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, I'd like everybody to turn off their cellphones or mute them, so we don't have any interruptions. Do we have a staff report on county commissioners' actions pertaining to matters of this board?
No.
Okay, we don't have any consent agenda items. At this point in time, we invite any citizen who would like to make comments on anything that's not pertaining to the hearings tonight. If there's something you would like to talk about that's unrelated to the hearings tonight, this is your opportunity to address the planning commission. Seeing none, did everybody sign in that wanted to talk tonight? Did we get a sign-in sheet out? Okay, so if everybody signed in on that sheet?
It's on the podium.
It's on the podium if you'd like to sign in.
Please print your name and address clearly, thank you.
Okay, while we're getting the rest of the sign-ups over there, we can move on to the approval of the meeting minutes. So, was everybody able to review the meeting minutes from last night? Okay. Okay. Yeah, it's actually seventeen pages, and I just got it late this afternoon, and I didn't have a chance to review it. So, I think what I'd like to do on the meeting minutes, even though I realize that the staff put in a tremendous amount of work to get this ready for today, I think it came out on Monday or in an additional part, addition of the package, but I'd like to continue the approval of the meeting minutes until the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, has everybody signed in that would like to? Okay. Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing on "Touched by a Horse," S U dash twenty-two dash zero-zero-four-four. And if you'd like to do your presentation, please?
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight and spending some of your Wednesday evening with us. My name is Danny Klavanner, and I'm a land use planner for community and economic development here in Albert County. The first project we're gonna be looking at is a special use by review for a horse therapy, horse therapy training on an agriculturally zoned parcel. The location is at fifty-three fifty Taylor Rainey Circle in Elizabeth, Colorado. The landowner is Melissa Pierce. This application came in in January of 2022. The community meeting was waived by the CDS director. The application was submitted in August of last year, and tonight is the first hearing date. All noticing was completed in accordance with the zoning regulations, with newspaper submittal in June, the June twenty-second, mailings June twentieth, onsite signposting June twenty-seventh. Here's the location. It's in central Albert County, western, just near Elizabeth, between Elizabeth and Kiowa. Surrounding zoning and densities, you have agriculture on all sides, to the north a forty-acre parcel, south a sixty, east a hundred-and-twenty acres, west on agriculture and residential use with a forty-acre parcel. Here's an aerial map of the location. As you can see, they have a horse arena, and it's surrounded by agriculture. So, the use here is agritourism, use included with this special use by review. There will be training for therapy coaches year-round with eight weekends, Thursday through Sundays, and fourteen students maximum, and during these weekends, overnight stay within yurts onsite, and there's a restroom facility inside. Another interesting thing about this is most of the training is conducted online, but there are some overnight stays to do more training, and then about ten to fifteen appointment-only personal therapy sessions, and then one special event with a graduation with up to a hundred-and-fifty guests. Here's a look at the site plan here. The special use by review area is highlighted in the red box. You see the horse arena, barn, and the yurts there. This went through the referral process, and no objections were raised by the contacted referral agencies. So, in our review, Article three, E five of the zoning regulation lists review criteria A through F for special use by review requests. Planning commission is to consider these criteria in their review of this application. The eight criteria are these following. If this use is in harmony, so, A, the special use by review request is an accessory to the primary agricultural use of the property. While the proposed use is closely associated with the agricultural use of surrounding properties, it also provides services to county residents. Commercial-type uses that accentuate the rural character of the county are supported by the comprehensive plan. The second is if this will have an undue burden on infrastructure. Taylor Rainey Circle is a private drive that grants access only to the subject property. There is no infrastructure in the area that is affected by this proposal besides County Road Twenty-One. The adjacent county road is not anticipated to be burdened by this proposal. C, if it will have undue traffic congestion or burden on the system. The use will not unduly increase traffic congestion or burden the existing road system. Public works here in the county reviewed application materials and had no comments or objections to the proposal. A burden on the roadway system was not expected, and no physical improvements were required. D, if it will cause undue pollution. And this proposal will not cause significant air odor, water, noise, or light pollution. The uses proposed are not believed to cause significant forms of pollution. The uses are agricultural in nature and blend in well with the existing primary use of the agricultural property. E, if all sanitation requirements will be met. All sanitation requirements will be met. Public health here in the county reviewed application materials and had no comments or objections on the proposal. The business facility includes three bathrooms for public use in the barn. During, excuse me, during events, porta-potties are rented and cleaned daily. The leach field for the business is separate from the primary residence. If this is an adequately landscaped, buffered, and screened plan, the use will be adequately landscaped, buffered, and screened. The proposed business does not differ much in aesthetics than in agricultural use. In addition, there is considerable distance between the special use area and many of the structures and adjacent properties. This is believed by staff to be a natural and satisfactorily buffering for this use. G, whether the use will otherwise be detrimental to health, safety, or welfare. This use should not be detrimental to health, safety, or welfare of the present or future inhabitants of Albert County. Staff has found that the proposed horse therapy training set use will not be detrimental to Albert County residents. This use serves to highlight the rural character of the county and improve the county's services opportunities. H, whether supplemental standards are met for specific uses as applicable. Supplemental standards are met for specific uses as applicable, and no supplemental standards are applicable to this request. So, our findings from Albert County Planning is to recommend the planning commission to make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the "Touched by a Horse" special use by review. This recommendation will be subject to the following conditions. That the applicant will remove the sign. The special use by review shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and recordation of all appropriate documentation is to occur within a hundred-and-eighty days. And then, these structures must be permitted by building and fire departments before continuing use. So, that concludes the presentation for "Touched by a Horse" special use by review, and I'll just leave up the site plan for this special use by review. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to make a presentation on this? Or add anything to what was said?
Danny was amazing. We've gone through six of your staff members over this year to get this done. Laura was pivotal all the way through, and we thank her for doing such a great job, and Danny did tonight as well. We've been in operation there over eight years without any complaints or anybody mentioning anything, but we are here respectfully to listen to anybody that has an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna open the public testimony at this point in time, and the first one for "Touched by a Horse" that wanted to speak was Linda Mitchell. If you can pull the mic a little closer? Is the green light on?
Yes. My name is Linda Mitchell, and my husband, Brian Mitchell.
Okay, you need to give your address as well when you come up to the mic. Your name and address, please.
My address is thirty-three one hundred, County Road Twenty-One, and I know it's confusing because we actually live on Taylor Renee Circle, but when we moved there, that Taylor Renee Circle was not there, and it was the end of Twenty-One, so we took the address that way. So, that's why it doesn't match up. But, to go forward, my husband and I own the property just west, adjacent to the Pierce property. We purchased forty acres in twenty oh-four and built our home there. Encompassed within the property lines is the easement road and is part of our property, which gives access to the Pierce property. So, prior to this meeting, I left numerous messages with the Board of Commissioners and planning to get full access to the applications, so that I would have information, and I did not receive any calls back, so I'm certainly at a disadvantage regarding information, probably pertaining to this special permit. As far as I know, these two forty-acre tracts were zoned ag or ag one, have a single-family residence, but for the last nine years, or approximately that time, Melissa Pierce has been operating a business there. When we purchased our forty acres and applied for a building permit, we had to agree to make provisions for access to the adjacent forty acres with an easement road or donate the land for a road to the county. This was an expensive decision for us, as the cost to build a road to county specs and move trees from the easement area was about forty thousand dollars. The easement is a private road and does not receive any maintenance or improvements from the county. We contend that Melissa is taking advantage of our investment in the needs, original intent, and continues to profit from business presently by conducting there. This is not a business zone community, it's a neighborhood of families. Since 2015, Melissa has offered to have her yard maintenance man try to grade an ag road base one time, and because conditions are so bad with the road, we agreed to them to let them try to fix the problem. The conditions continue today. We have to drive on the shoulder to reach County Road Twenty-One, because once we come out of our driveway, the ruts and all of the, we can't get our car across, so we have to make a quick left, drive on the shoulder to get down to the corner of Twenty-One. And I'm, I'm not sure, is this, if this is allowed to continue, and a riding academy is also added, our property values will be affected negatively by the road, and that road will not function as is. Over the years, we have counted fifty-plus automobiles at one time or another coming in for business. Please consider all the Albert County residents of the Road Twenty-One area who are enduring traffic and deterioration of the roads, including our easement road, for the advantage of one. We are opposed to any further business being conducted at this location, and ask the Board to abide with the original purpose and intent of the easement road to provide access to a single-family residence and not for business. And that's all I have. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Melissa, you already had your, okay. Okay, and the next one on "Touched by a Horse" is Brian Mitchell. Give your name and address, please.
Brian Mitchell, thirty-three one hundred, County Road Twenty-One.
Okay, and?
I have a lot to say.
Pardon?
My road has been destroyed for nine years. I have, I have to go out with my tractor, I have to blade it. I can't get out, she's laughing today, but I can't get out of my, with my small car. I have to go on the side of the road in the grass to get out on my road. I, I'm worn out with trying to improve the road. It's torn up. Two years ago, fifty-three cars went up and down that road. Fifty-three came in, I sat out there, and I counted them. I was there all day. A few of them left for lunch and came back, and then fifty-three, fifty-three went out at night. Okay, that was two years ago. She has approximately twelve cars now come in. I think she said she's doing online, but it's a lot better with twelve or thirteen, but the road is decimated. It's, I, I'm worn out with it. I can't continually go out there every day, and it's, and if we have any kind of rain or moisture, it's, it's torn up. I don't know if you wanna bother seeing, my wife has them on our computer of what the roads look like, but it's, it's a mess, and every year, and we have more and more traffic. And I, you know, eighteen years ago, the county commissioner, it wasn't a county commissioner, it was a road and, it was...
Road and Bridge?
Road and Bridge. And I talked to the head of Road and Bridge, and he came out, and we walked the area where the road was gonna be, and then he called me several times at home, and he said, "I want you to stop worrying about this. Don't worry about it anymore. It's just one family unit." He says it's a mother and father and two children, and he says, "It's over, don't worry about it. Nothing's gonna go on farther than that. It's gonna be no different than where you live." And I, I was concerned about it, but I believed in what he said, you know? And I'm retired. I came, I bought my property, I spent a lot of money. I bought my property after I'd been working for almost sixty years, and it came in there, and now, I, I can't even go out on the road that was my road, I have to go alongside. And Melissa was laughing about it, that it was hard. It's hard when I have a small car and I have to go on the side of the road, 'cause I can't get it up, 'cause it's dug down like that. It's almost a foot when I came up here on the sides. The main part in the middle is okay, but every time we have a rainstorm, now it's getting worse. I just don't have the energy or the money to completely redo the road every year. It's getting horrible. It's, it can't handle this kind of traffic, like horse trailers coming in, six, six-wheeled horse trailers, like semis, like big trucks. They have, when that year that they had fifty-three come in there, they had trucks, they had horse trailers, and they also had cars, and it was a tremendous burden for the road. And if we got any moisture at all, it was total destruction. I know that, like, if you don't live there and you don't have this problem of getting back and forth... I know that, like, if you don't live there and you don't have this problem of getting back and forth to grocery store or whatever, but it's hard for us to get back and forth now on the road. We have to go clear on the side on the grass to get back and forth. So... And then I had talked to her, which bothered me. She... I thought that she was braggadocious in the fact that she said she didn't have to pay any taxes for her business.
Pardon me, Chair. That's three minutes.
And that I did. I mean, I had to pay all my taxes for the road and for my home. And she was tax-free on her business. So, I don't know. I just... This road was not built for that kind of traffic. And that's what the Roden Bridge, they told me, that that was never going to happen. And now it's continuing. And I've tried hard to get along by doing the road, but I'm worn out. I'm too old. I'm worn out to a frazzle. And it's a mess. If you saw it today, you wouldn't believe it.
Thank you. There's... Excuse me. There's one more person to speak on Touched By A Horse. Cheryl Hill.
Hi there. It's Cheryl Hill, 27513 Rainbow Circle. That's Elizabeth. So I'm speaking... I've been out in this area since 1996. I've also been a student of Melissa's over the last four years, which means I have been going in and out of her place cores twice a year over the last two years, four times a year over the years previous. Now, I don't stay on-site because I live close enough. I can tell you that the amount of people that she is helping, in my opinion, cannot be reached in any other way. It's amazing. Second, the respect that she asks of each of us when we're driving in or not to go over a certain amount, you know, miles per hour, et cetera. Everyone is extremely respectful. I have been to parties and things like that in other areas out here that create more of a disruption than those of us who are going to training. And sir, I don't... I don't know you folks at all.
I'm sorry. You need to address the commission. You can't address anybody in the audience.
Okay. So I've never met these folks that are back here. But I've never... The road issues that they're talking about tonight, I've been over there enough times that I've never experienced that. So I want to, you know, speak on that behalf as well. But more importantly, it's what Melissa is doing for this community, for the people that live outside of the community, that travel here to be trained, that then can go out and help other people in this world that need the help.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that's everyone who wanted to speak on Touched By A Horse. So at this point in time, we have the ability for the applicant to speak again and address the issues.
Thank you. We've had more rain, as we all know, than ever before this year. And the road is dry and has a lot of erosion to it right now. We have it drug, and I have the receipts. Every single year, we maintain that road about $7,500 to $8,500 a year. They do not want to pay any part of that. I pay for it because I do feel like I have 12 people coming in. Most of them do carpool where possible. And as Cheryl said, I am after everybody. Drive slowly, be respectful, stay on the main part of the road. One suggestion I would have, because I have not had a problem with the Mitchells prior to this, to my face, they've been extremely supportive and nice and smiling and all of that. And I do want to clear up, I darn well do pay taxes. My taxes are paid for the whole year right now. I have my tax receipt for you. What he was referring to, and I pay about $70,000 in federal tax, what he's referring to was one of my programs that I did not need to pay a tax on, so he took it out of context. I definitely pay my taxes to this county. I'm always surprised that taxes are as low in this county as they are, to be honest. It's lower than anywhere else that I've ever lived. One suggestion I would have is we use that chip seal stuff on our part of our entrance to our property. And we have that reestablished pretty much every year. They have it, but only from their gate inward. They don't bring the chip seal out in front where they need it. So, yeah, that would solve the problem. If they need me to provide chip seal for their driveway, I suppose I'd be willing to do that. That feels punitive to me. I am not... I'm running mostly an online business with a few people who come in. Like I say, they eat in our restaurants, they supply... They love this little town, and they come from all over the world, from Ireland, from Scotland, from Latvia, from New Zealand, from everywhere, from all around the world to train with me. So this would shut my business down. I would need to sell my property and move out of this county. And I've been an extremely good neighbor. The rest of my neighbors, Dr. Tammy Sorley, who owned Iron Horse for all those years, she's one of my border neighbors. She said, "If you need me at that meeting, I'm glad to come because you're a great neighbor." And I said, "No, they're telling us it's no problem." So I had no idea. Our other neighbor, Patricia, her land butts up to my land. She said, "Do you want me to write a letter down there to them or anything?" And I said, "I don't think I need it, but if I do, I'll ask you." Kevin, my other neighbor, so on all sides except for the Mitchells. But we're the only ones that share that road. So I do hear what they're saying. I have never seen him on a tractor on that road. My husband does a lot on that road and mows their property, mows right in front of their property, and clears snow for them. So this is news to me, and I am happy, if I'm the guilty party on the road, to buy chip seal for my neighbors. They shouldn't have to, but I would do that if they need it, if they need the financial help.
Let me ask you a question.
Mm-hmm.
When you're putting chip seal on the road, you come in the whole way...
Not on the whole road, but in there... What he's talking about is right as he leaves his gate, it's terribly eroded this year. We didn't do that. We don't drive there. But it is terribly eroded this year from the rain.
Okay, so the main part of the road and from the County Road straight back...
Mm-hmm.
Are you adding any material to that part of the road?
We grade it. We add chip seal about 50 yards from our entrance. Cheryl, I'm going to guess 50 yards from our entrance, so our entrance doesn't get torn up. And they've got a beautiful chip sealed driveway, but they didn't carry the chip seal out in front. So when you turn when it rains, I don't know where you live in this county, but the county doesn't grade our road, so it is a problem. So we end up doing it ourselves.
And their driveway out to the main road, do you put any chip seal on that part of it?
That's what I'm saying, is I'd be willing to do that if they can't afford it. I'd be willing to do that.
Well, that's part of the common road that you use. So it's usually...
In order for them to get out of their driveway.
Usually everybody on a private road handles the whole road. And not their driveway, but the whole road, so that's why I was asking.
Yeah, the main road is still that sand. It's that silty sand that we have everywhere in the county. And this year, with all the rain, one side of it, his side of the road, has gotten really eroded, especially by their driveway. So we have it graded. We have our one time a year, which is the only time he could have seen 50 cars coming in and out. I promise, I did have a Christmas party, a pretty good Christmas party a couple of years ago. But the only time he could have seen that was our big convention in September. And so we prepare the road before that. We have it graded. We get it all, you know, smoothed out and good. We add chip seal where needed for ours. I have not added chip seal at his personal driveway exit onto the road. I didn't know I needed to. I'm hearing tonight that he's having trouble getting out of his driveway, onto his road.
Okay, so what you're talking about, his driveway comes up to a T, and the main road comes across the top, the main easement comes across the top. So you're saying you maintained from his road out to the main road all the way back?
So 21... Yeah, 21 makes a bend, and it comes down in front of his property to lead down to mine. And I don't know how long that area is. We had one conversation where we'd go in together and chip seal the whole thing, but it's more expensive than anybody thought it would be.
So the road you've got...
Uh-huh.
Let's see, where is it on the map here?
It's the upper left. See that driveway?
Right up in here?
Yeah, it kind of goes into a cul-de-sac. Right.
Okay. So this comes out to the main road?
Right.
And his driveway comes up in here somewhere?
Yeah, the county blades right to that T, and then it stops.
Okay, so from here to here is road that you use all the time?
Yes.
And have you put anything on that portion of the road?
No, they use it, we use it. It has not been a problem until all the rain this year, to be honest. This year's been unusual. So we have not chip sealed that whole road. We both use it. Do I use it more than he does? Yes, I'm willing to say that. That's why if he needs help getting out of there on his own driveway, he could have said something to his neighbor.
Okay. Do you have a question? Okay, I think so. So I'm... All righty. We'll leave it at that for the moment, and I imagine you'll be talking later.
I'm for finding a win-win for both of us. I recognize the rain and the road's been bad this year.
Okay, so I think that answers the question. We can go on and close the rebuttal at this point and go to a board-only discussion. So public testimony and the applicant rebuttal is all closed.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll start. Van, do you have any?
I believe that she answered the question regarding... She's willing to help them out with their... On their...
I'm sorry, Commissioners. Can you put your microphones closer? Pardon me. Thank you.
Again, okay, I believe that this answers the question. If she is willing to help them out in terms of making sure that the road gets... And I understand the problems we had this year, okay, with roads. My road is completely torn up, okay? Into the house. County does maintain it, so that's been taken care of. But it was a very unusual spring. So if she's willing to help, that answers my question.
Great. Deanne?
Yes. I would just like to say...
Your mic, please.
I would just like to say that helping your neighbors who are elderly is... Falls right in line with the work that you do. I have a developmentally delayed son who's blind and autistic and actually went to your stuff when you were in Boulder. And that good that you do is... I just can't tell you the amount of... I didn't even know you were back out here, if you were out here, because I would have had my son. But I'm just saying that I really appreciate the work that you do do. And I know that you're the kind of person that can see that they're really just struggling. And if they're struggling, you know, get some friends, do whatever it takes, help the neighbors out, but don't stop doing what you're doing, please.
I just have one question for the planning managers. This is classified as agritourism. Was there no other category that this could fall under? No other education component, things like that?
Other than agritourism, there might be other uses that it could be considered in terms of educational facilities. But just based on the previous planner's decision, she thought that would be the best way to classify it, so...
Okay. I don't really have a problem with it either way. I was just curious as to why the classification of agritourism didn't seem to logically make sense to me. And then the second question, well, I'll just leave it at that.
Yeah, my question for staff is, excuse me, that is a private road, correct?
Correct.
And it was built by the Mitchells? So at the time it was built, what type of agreement was there to maintain that road?
You're asking if there was any recorded road maintenance agreement or anything like that? Did you see anything along that line?
I did not see anything along that line.
In general, okay, can I answer that? All right, in general, the people that live on a private road maintain it, okay? That's... There's no specified...
Well, there could...
Nothing specified in it.
There are some road maintenance agreements that are recorded, you know, on some of those private roads.
If the county is going to...
That was what the question was.
Yeah, if the county is going to take over, but in this case...
No, it's recorded against the individual properties. You know, that's the way it works.
Usually when they're built, you get a permit to build a road, and there's an agreement to maintain it. And that's... I don't know if there is one or not. I was just asking if there was. Mr. Mitchell had a comment. Can he answer that?
Okay, just quickly.
Pardon me, sir. Mr. Mitchell?
Would you step up to the mic, please, for a second? And I'll give you just a few seconds to answer that particular part of the question.
On 18 years ago, she didn't live there. There was other people that lived there, and they... It was just a family unit and our family unit. And now, when she bought it, five years later...
We understand that. Is there a road maintenance agreement that exists?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so based on that, Van hit what I was asking. It's typically on a private road. If there's not an agreement, then the people on the road maintain it. So I would like to see some kind of agreement between you and the Mitchells to do some... On how you're going to share the maintenance on that road. I was out there over the weekend, and I had to drive on the shoulder too, to get in. So I know exactly what they're talking about. So I think before you go to the Board of County Commissioners, you should have some type of agreement worked out where you can take care of that problem mutually. Well, one-to-one would be the best way and handle that when you go to the Board of County Commissioners.
Are you suggesting we make it a condition?
I would like to make it a condition.
Yeah, I think that it needs to be. It's my opinion. What do you think? That that needs to be a condition to go to the county commissioners? That they come to some sort of an agreement?
The only problem I have with that is a very short turnaround time.
Is what?
That there's a short turnaround time.
You would have to get that done very quickly.
Well...
Well, that can be...
If they sat down over a cup of coffee, they could do it.
If it can be done mutually, it could be done quickly.
Pardon me, please. I'm sorry. I really do need everyone to speak into their microphones. I'm not recording.
I'm sorry. I can't hear you.
I need you to speak into your microphones, please, loudly. I'm not hearing everyone's comments.
Well, we're trying.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. My only concern is that's a very short turnaround time between now and the county commissioners. If the commissioners want to make that a condition of their approval, then...
If we make that a condition on our...
Recommendation.
Recommendation, then they need to deal with that.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we can really make that a condition, but it's a pretty good suggestion that they do something like that. I don't know if we can make that a condition, that they have to make that agreement.
Well, I think I'd like to ask them if they're willing to agree to an agreement on who handles the road and who...
Well, as Melissa said in her letter, this has been a copacetic.
It's been what?
We've been copacetic. We've been copacetic for nine years, that we get along just great.
Okay.
The truth is, we've addressed this, I can't tell you how many times with them and.
Well, I'm not listening to any, no, ma'am, stop.
But we are ready.
Okay, stop. I don't want to listen to any argument, okay? I'm asking you if you're willing to sit down with them and work it out. Okay, that's the end.
Yes, it's terrible. Them solved.
Okay, that's enough on that discussion.
The only other comment I had was in the application, reading it, and on the presentation by staff. Staff said it's a year-round facility, but in your application, you state that it's primarily a summer or, well, summer season here. That, that's when, that's when people are at the property and the rest of the year it's your own personal use aside from the other properties you have, so. And, and I read in the documentation from the state that you have amended your well permit to cover both residential and, and the use of your facility. That's all, thank you.
Okay. I'm, I think we've addressed everything that we had a concern. So I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the.
No, we can't approve.
What?
We don't approve it. We recommend it.
Oh yeah, recommendation, a recommendation of approval?
That's fine.
Is that better?
It, it works.
Okay. To the county commissioners for touched by a horse's special use review. Is that right? That's what it says here.
And that, it's SU 22.
Pardon? Oh, you want me to say all that?
Right.
Where is that?
It's right here.
Right here. Okay.
Right here.
It's SU 220044.
Right, there, he said it. SU 22-0044.
Okay.
Why don't I have that?
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I'd like to amend, amend the motion. Like to amend the motion.
Okay.
I'd like to add in our recommendation that the commissioners consider having some type of agreement, verbal or written, between the two property owners on that, on that road.
I should.
Or maintenance, joint maintenance on the road.
Okay, let's back up then. We've got a motion to amend it. Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we amend the motion. And now, with the amended motion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm sorry, could you repeat the whole motion with the amendment for the record? And then I need to know who did the second.
Want me to try it again?
No, no. Deanne made the motion initially. It was seconded by Kevin. The amendment was Roger, seconded by Kevin. Okay? Okay. So, we're closing the public hearing on touched by a horse. We're going to open the public hearing on the Sunbear Estates rezone. And thank you all for coming.
Thank you, everybody for coming. Here, we are on to the next item of the day here. Sunbear Estates rezone. So, this is a request for rezoning from an agricultural parcel to residential agricultural property. This location is at the western border of the county, bordering Douglas County and County Road 122. The applicant here is Steve McNally, the owner, and the Grace Erickson, applicant representative, and IPA Development is the owner as well. So, the process for this started in July of last year. A community meeting was held in September. The application was submitted this year in March and the referral period took place during late April to mid-May. And today is the first hearing. All noticing complied with the zoning and subdivision regulations here in the county, including newspaper, mailings, and signposting. Here's the location, right here, on the western edge of the county, just south of Elizabeth and on County Road 122. And when you cross into Douglas County, that's known as Anderson. Here's a little aerial map showing the parcels to the west and, which is a subdivision. And then you have Douglas County there to the east. And then south is agricultural land. Another aerial map of the, where the parcel is. So you can see it's bordered by 10-acre parcels here in the county, all the way to the north and over here to the west. And then here's 122. So residential, residential agricultural lot RA is to the north, a 9.6-acre residential lot to the south, and 87-acre agricultural lot to the east. There's residential agriculture, six-acre, six residential lots in the Chisholm subdivision. And these range from 9 to 24 acres. And then to the west, you have Douglas County and agriculture and residential. Here's a zoning map that shows County Road 122, the Chisholm subdivision here, that's also zoned residential ag. And then you have ag here to the south. This went through the referral process and the applicant has acknowledged or resolved all comments raised during the referral process. So our rezone criteria that we follow here in Elbert County, Article 3 C4, lists review criteria A through F for all rezone requests. The Planning Commission and Board of County Commissioners are to consider these criteria. The following are the six criteria. A, whether this proposed rezoning conforms to our comprehensive plan. And. Yes, it does. It is in an area that is harmonious with the surrounding area and land uses in the area. Whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the provision of public services. These residential agriculturally zoned lots will have their own well-inseptic, their own private access to County Road 122, not creating an adverse effect to surrounding property owners. Since the, and then D, whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the environment. Since the future, future uses of the proposed lots will be confined to residences with limited agriculture, it is anticipated that the impact to the environment of this request will be minimal. E, whether this proposed rezoning will create unreasonable traffic congestion. The increase in density proposed within this application will generate a limited traffic impact. It will also be confined to a private road. And F, whether the proposed rezoning will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of the inhabitants of Elbert County. The increase in density while retaining an agricultural context by rezoning from A to RA in an area that has approved more dense development in the past should not be detrimental. The applicant has reasonably addressed neighbor concerns and questions from the community meeting and has been responsive to guidance from planning staff to address concerns about this proposal. Staff believes that the approval of this request will not be at the detriment of the county or surrounding neighbors. So our findings are that Elbert County Planning recommends that the Planning Commission make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the requested Sunbear Estates, RZ 23-18837 rezone, subject to the following conditions. The applicant will be required to remove the public hearing sign within seven days of a decision by the Board of County Commissioners. The rezoning shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the exhibits are recorded. Recordation of all appropriate documentation to occur within 180 days of the B O C C approval. So thank you for your time on this rezone and I'll leave it with the exhibit for the rezone. Thank you.
Okay, does, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Hi, my name is Grace Erickson with Providence Consulting LLC. I am the applicant representative. I do want to introduce the Sunbear Development Team. Steve McNally is here. He is with IPA Development, Inc. And as Danny mentioned, he is the owner and applicant. And Chris Cummins, private counsel, is also present. I, I know that the Planning Commissioner is aware that we have a hearing after this for the platte and this is for the rezone, so I'll keep my comments to the rezone if that's what's appropriate right now.
Just the rezone.
Okay. My understanding as well is when the packet went out last week, our updated exhibit with all the comments being addressed wasn't in there. The comments were minor, what was changed. We changed Anderson Avenue to County Road 122 on the rezone exhibit. But I believe that's what's up on the screen right now. I can't tell. The updated zoning exhibit. Okay, great. So yeah, Danny gave a great overview of the zoning from agricultural to residential agricultural. We do believe it's compatible with the surrounding land uses. And that's the extent of my comments at this time, until or unless the commission has any questions.
Thank you. Okay, then I'll open public testimony on this. And I believe I have two people who want to speak on the rezone. And the first one is David. And, I'm sorry, David, what's your last name?
Anderson, no relation to the road. You should have three. Unfortunately.
You have three people on here.
Okay, there's actually two Davids, but you were going to speak on the rezone?
Yes, please.
Okay. And.
And I wasn't aware that it was called Sunbear, so I just put Anderson Road Development.
Okay, would you state your address, please?
Sure, 30291 Chisholm Trail.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, it's my first time here. And I've been encouraged by kind of the prior testimony on, by your response to it. It's nice to hear that it was kind of measured responses from you and that you really listened. So I'm hoping for the same for us. So, my wife and I purchased our property four years ago. My wife grew up in North Dakota on a very large farm and ranch. So we're stuck in Castle Pines currently, but we purchased four years ago for the wide-open spaces of Elbert County. And I can't help to look at the logo. I'm glad that there are some homes out there for us to move into, but the logo denotes wide-open spaces. So, when we purchased, that was very important to us, that there was 80 acres zoned ag. We did our due diligence and that was an important consideration in our purchase. The other is if you came up onto the plateau, we just happen to, our property is adjacent. If you went back to the aerial, you would see our property, which is directly east adjacent. And right there. So we are right there with the slightly curved road coming in. If you were to come up to our, our home, we have what I described to everybody in Colorado and everybody outside of Colorado is a view of the continental divide, God's country. So, to address the term welfare, we bought this property for our personal long-term welfare to retire, to have views of the continental divide overlooking 80 agricultural acres. So that would be my point number one. It's interesting that on the prior approval, light pollution was taken into account, but not in the rezoning. My wife's family, parents live in Salida, Colorado. And if you haven't been there, go there. I'm sure you guys all have been to Salida. When we go to visit them, often, they're 92. Every evening, we go outside to look at the stars because we don't have that view in Castle Pines. But we do have that view when we go out to our property on Chisholm. And it's amazing to see the stars. I never thought there, there would ever be such a thing as light pollution, but there is. And I never thought that there would be areas denoted as dark sky areas, but there are. And while I don't think officially we have a dark sky, maybe we do. Maybe there are dark sky areas in the county. But certainly, we have views of, of the, the sky from our property like we can't get in other places, in Douglas County at least. But those are primary considerations. Wide-open spaces, like my wife grew up, dark sky. And we would like to maintain that. And of course, I failed to mention the view. I'll, I'll wrap for the rezoning, but I would like to address in terms of the platte, in terms of the density that's being suggested. And just generally speaking.
Pardon me, Commissioner, that's three minutes.
Sorry, am I, am I done?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. And just for future, how many minutes do I have all?
Actually, three minutes.
Okay, so thanks for the, thanks for the overage.
Do you have the control to set it up on the screen? On the clock?
I didn't have the controls today.
Anyway, I, I appreciate you listening and I'll give me a time next time.
Thank you. Okay, the next person on here is another David. And David, what was your last name?
It's Dame, just like Notre Dame.
Okay, thank you.
D-A-M-E.
Okay.
So I live on the, I'm, I'm David Dame. I live at 11707 Anderson Avenue, which is actually one property over from, so that's the Elbert County line, the, the west side of that property in question. I'm one property over from that. Moved out there about 25 years ago, when Anderson Avenue was a dirt road. And one of the first things that we were hit with was all the problems with the dirt road. You know, we had six or so neighbors out there, couldn't even get up and down the road. So we elected to give a portion of our property away. In fact, everybody down Anderson Road gave a portion of our property to Douglas County in exchange for paving Anderson Avenue, which we now call Anderson Speedway. in exchange for paving Anderson Avenue, which we now call Anderson Speedway, specifically for Elbert County residents. They race home at night, 80, 90, 100 miles an hour, can't get any policing out there, and we're talking about adding, you know, eight to 10 more houses just at the top of our hill. Now, this property sits at the top of the hill. Chisholm sits kind of down in a valley, even though this is part of Chisholm, I would assume, or they could call that. But it's at the top of the hill, so as you're driving down Anderson, all of that appears to be Douglas County, and you don't see Chisholm on the other side. My concern is it doesn't fit in our environment out there. We're all 35, 40, 80-acre parcels, 160-acre parcels for as far as you can see as you're coming up Anderson Avenue, including this property. So it's going to sit at the top of the hill and have all these, you know, might as well just build townhomes up there. So that's one concern, is it doesn't fit into the neighborhood, even though it appears to fit in the neighborhood if you go over the hill and look at Chisholm. Elbert County doesn't support the infrastructure, so there won't be any burden on you guys for the infrastructure, because Douglas County supports it all. Everybody from Chisholm comes down to the Elbert County side. In the wintertime, our private drive is a parking lot of people that can't get into Elbert County, because Elbert County doesn't come out there and plow for two or three days. So they plug up our private drive, because we plow our drive, and Anderson is actually plowed eight times a night, for some reason. I have no idea why it's plowed that often, but it's way too often. So this is going to add to that congestion. Light pollution. Douglas County made me take my light down off my barn because of light pollution, because a neighbor complained about me having a light on my barn. They also complained, I have a sign, I have Rocky Mountain Hay Company. We used to farm about 3,000 acres right there.
Pardon me, Commissioner, that's three minutes.
And bring all that back. They made me take the little tiny landscape lights off my sign because of light pollution. You know, and obviously, we didn't realize we had a three-minute, we didn't realize we had to sign in, we didn't realize we had a three-minute limit, otherwise I'd have been a little more prepared, but that gives you the idea, you know, think about 10 houses being built right next door to your house.
I understand.
All right, thank you.
Next one is Brent. How do you pronounce your last name?
Gilia. Brent Gilia, 11711 Anderson Avenue. Frank Dun.
Go ahead.
All right, that little, I shouldn't say little, but that red shop that you see to the far left there, that's my property. I order this. Yep, you got it. And the thing is, this kind of whole thing has morphed, because I believe when it first started, it was going to be 140 and 220s? Was that right?
I don't know any of that history of it. I just know the recent history of the 8, 10-acre.
Okay. But it's morphed greatly, and the concerns that we had, and I say "we" because we had other people from the Chisholm side over at one of the first planning meetings, to my knowledge, they've never been addressed that I know of. Now it's morphed into eight properties with eight separate wells, eight separate septic systems? That's not what this whole area was all about in the first place. It was egg. The next thing you're going to try to put up over there is an apartment building, maybe? I don't know. But it's morphed out of control, and it needs to go back to the 140 and the 220s. Okay? That's three wells, three septics. I mean, this is just overbuilding. I mean, it's just going crazy. As far as what Mr. Dame said about the road, he's absolutely correct. It's Talladega out there, and those cars coming from out of the east, they're trucking. I won't let my son ride, ever since we got there, and I learned that, I don't let him ride his bike out there, because people are hauling. We, once in a while, we get a Douglas County sheriff sitting out there, but it's not enough. There's no enforcement on the other side that I've ever seen, except because of a parked U-Haul truck. They came out for that. But the road is a problem, and everyone's going to go, everyone's going to go west, because nobody's going to want to take that dirt road. That is one of the most poorly maintained roads I've ever, I've had to deal with. But it's serviceable for the needs, I suppose, over there, if you keep it agricultural over here, and don't divide it down so much. I mean, that's getting a little ridiculous when you're going down to eight, 10-acre lots. It's too much, and sometimes too much is too much, and you need to dial that back. I know we're after the big sales here, but it does not fit in with egg. I won't see any of those folks out there doing any egg work, will I? It's only going to be residential. You're zoning it egg and residential, but I bet it's only going to be residential. Who am I doing on time?
Ready on the dot.
All right.
Okay, that concludes our public testimony on the rezone. And would the applicant like to respond?
Yes, so we appreciate the public comments and feedback. I can easily clarify the apartment building comment. This is not being rezoned for apartments. We are proposing residential agricultural, and we anticipate any future uses to fall within those uses stated in Elbert County's zoning code, as they may change from time to time, but we never anticipate any apartments. We really appreciate the comments on lighting. We have been considering adding dark skies to the CCNRs that we're preparing for future development, and dark sky regulations are becoming more and more common. I am familiar with Salida. I actually grew up in Chaffey County, so familiar with growing up with dark skies. That's not something that would be too difficult for us to address and add into the CCNRs. With that said, however, I would anticipate any development occurring on that 80 acres would be much more compliant with dark skies than any of the surrounding property, with potentially the exception of Douglas County, because I believe that they may have some dark sky ordinances adopted. The proposal that you see today is consistent with what our development team, with what this owner has been proposing all along. I know that there was previous ownership, previous things that may have happened in the past, but my client purchased the property about a year ago. We went into the community meeting last fall, and this is kind of what we've been developing all along, obviously more refined today than back in September, but this was always my client, the owner's plan, who owns the property present. Let's see. In regard to the speed on the road, again, it sounds like this is already an issue, is what I'm hearing. Some of this, I don't believe is tied to whether or not this is zoned or not, because it sounds like there are concerns with traffic. Now, in the traffic letter that we submitted, which was accepted by the Public Works Department and County Engineering, our engineer actually mentioned that it's a 45 mile per hour speed limit, that he even thought that was kind of excessive, that he wouldn't even anticipate people to be going that speed. Now again, that's not something that we can control with our proposal, what the speed of Anderson Road or County Road 122 is, but it's something the county can always address with a speed study if that's an excessive speed. I also heard comments on a dedication of an easement. Now, in regard to Douglas County, to Douglas County, we are open to dedicating an easement, and I don't want to jump to the plat, I just want to address the comments that were made. Dedicating an easement to Elbert County, adjacent to County Road 122 at plat, is something that we would do as well. And that's up to the county, if the county wants to make any improvements on that main road. Lastly, you know, comments in regard to the agricultural, present use, two lots undeveloped, nothing happens. You know, I respect anyone's opinion on that. I don't ever want to argue against someone's opinion. All I can say is this is not designated open space. We do believe that this is compatible with a really large adjacent development. We're willing to add buffers out of respect for neighbors that were there first, but it's not designated open space. And I believe that is, addresses the comments, to my knowledge. Do you have anything to add, Chris? Okay.
Thank you. Okay, so the applicant rebuttal is closed at this point in time, and we're going to go to a board-only discussion. And I want to make one comment first. You have to understand where we're coming from as a Planning Commission or the Board of County Commissioners, when they address this as well at their meeting. We look at what the property rights of the individual are and what the county regulations are. We take into consideration health and safety types of issues or other issues that are brought up in the hearing, but in the end, we're addressing what the property owner has the right to do and what the county regulations allow them to do. And as long as they're complying with all the county regulations, we can make some conditions that we can add to it and advance on to the Board of the County Commissioners. But that's the way we have to approach it. So just so you understand that part of it. So as far as a board-only discussion goes, Van?
No, I'd just like to compliment you on the dark skies proposal. I think that works particularly out there.
Dan?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I, you were ready to make some compromises and willing to add There were some things that I was considered, I'm trying to find the exact thing. I had a question about, in your documents under the fire, I think it said that you would do cash in lieu of fees. What does that mean?
The county isn't interested in open space in that area, and it's better to receive cash in lieu of open space, so that money can go to funding other open space projects that the county is interested in.
So that's in lieu of the fees?
No, they pay the fees instead of dedicating land to open space.
Okay, so that's what's proposed here, correct?
What happens is the county ends up with all these tiny little open space places all over the place where they, that they have to, you know, manage and maintain. They don't want to do that.
Okay. But that's not the fire part, is it? What is that? Well, yeah, I didn't think it was...
Your question was about fire mitigation. Because of the area and the location here, the Fire District requests special provisions for fire protection, and for that, they request additional funding for their Fire District as part of the agreement, cash in lieu for the Fire District.
Is that where you understood that to be as well? Okay.
That's one of them.
All right. Well, yeah, there were two, but I was kind of, all right. So I think I had one of the thing here. No, I think that got answered, so I'm okay with that. The dark skies thing is nice.
I have no comments. I agree with Van on the dark sky, on the covenants, but we're looking at the rezoning only at this point.
Roger?
It's the zoning.
So real quick, on the slide that shows the potential lot provision, I'm interested in a line that's being drawn. It's a dotted line that goes north to south. Can you bring that up real quick?
There's two parcels here. They're each 40-acre parcels.
I'm not interested in this slide. I'm interested in the one that shows the dotted line that runs up, perpendicular to, no, the dotted line, runs perpendicular to Anderson Avenue. So yeah, that's it. That's a county line, right? So do we have to go seek approval from Douglas County as well?
Yes, we referred it to the Douglas County planners.
Okay, so what's the timing on that?
They have answered the referral comment, and they had no objections.
Okay, great.
Can I ask one thing? Who's going to, you showed this in the, where you have the cul-de-sac built, is that, is that in the plat or is that in the rezone?
It's final plat.
It's in the plat.
I'll hold my question for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty, so any other discussion by the board? Okay, I would entertain a motion for approval. Roger?
Pertaining to RZ 23-18837 rezone for Sunbear Estates, I move that we recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners.
I'll second it.
So Roger moved it, and Van stands second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I think we'll take a 10-minute break before we go into the Sunbear Estates' final Can you hear me? Okay, we're going to start the meeting again. And do remember, we do have the three minute rule and I, I should have said that sooner. But I have a tendency to let people talk until they start repeating themselves and then I say, "Thank you." But it is a three minute rule. So we're going to go into the Sun Bear Estates final plat, And so open the hearing on that. And if you, if you three would like to speak on that when the time comes, if you'll come up once, one at a time and you name an address again and what you want to say.
All right, thank you Commissioner. So this is the final case of the night and it is regarding the final plat for Sun Bear Estates. Similar details to the last, except for this is a final plat and a concurrent preliminary and final plat with eight proposed lots on 80 acres, so two 40 acre parcels. This followed the same process as the rezoning. The application was submitted simultaneously as the rezoning. Everybody at this point knows the location and zoning. So keynotes for the final plat. It is contingent on the rezone from ag to residential ag. It will have 10 acre lots and access through a single private road at CR 122, which will be known as Imperial Point. The existing land has no structures and the northern lots will have building envelopes as well as the southern one in the corner there, which I can point out, this one. The larger no build area will also accommodate a chism trail here. Typically RA has 50 foot setbacks. This is including a 100 foot no build zone, so it would double the setback requirement. A keynote about this is the private road will be about 1,550 feet long and 60 feet wide. It will end at a 100 foot diameter cul-de-sac and it begins at Anderson Ave down here, which becomes County Road 122 in Albert County. There is no ingress or egress on adjacent properties and additional utility easements are shown for Mountain View Electric. Article 12 of our design standards and studies in streets and roads states that local roads leading to a cul-de-sac providing access to more than one 20 acre lot and, or more than one and less than 20 acres in size shall not be more than 13, 20 feet in length. And then Article 1 of our enacting clauses, H variations and modifications, allows the Board of County Commissioners to authorize minor variations and/or modifications from these regulations. Such variations or modifications shall not be granted if it would be detrimental to the public good or impair the intent and purposes of these regulations. These conditions of variation or modification authorized shall be stated in writing in the meeting minutes of the Board of County Commissioners with the justification set forth. So Article 12 states that local roads leading to a cul-de-sac providing, which I just said, and this is a modification the Board of County Commissioners would have to accept. Referral responses were received from the following agencies and the applicant has acknowledged and or resolved all comments raised during the referral process. So the subdivision regulation criteria A through E is to be considered by the planning commission. These are the following five criteria. Whether the subdivider has provided evidence that a provision has been made for a water supply that is sufficient in terms of quantity, dependability and quality to provide a water supply in accordance with all applicable state laws and regulations. The applicant has received all the necessary approvals from the Division of Water Resources for the proposed eight lots on the property. The Division of Water Resources indicated after the augmentation plan approval that the water supply was adequate and would not provide injury based on the standard allocation approach to Albert County subdivision regulations 300 year water requirement. Whether the subdivider has provided evidence, if a public sewage disposal system is proposed, provision has been made for such system and if other methods of sewage disposal are proposed, evidence that such systems will comply with state and local laws which are in effect at the time of submission of the preliminary or final plat. There is no central sewer system proposed. Each individual lot will need onsite wastewater treatment systems or other recommended systems approved by the Albert County Public Health Department at the time of development. The third is whether the subdivider has provided evidence to show that all areas of the proposed subdivision, which may involve soil or topographical conditions presenting hazards or requiring special precautions have been identified by the subdivider and that the proposed uses of these areas are compatible with such conditions. The applicant was not required to submit a soils report. Soils testing will be needed for any sanitation approvals for individual sewer, or individual septic by Albert County Public Health at the time of development of each individual lot. Whether the application is following the requirements of the Albert County zoning requirements and subdivision requirements, regulations, excuse me. The applicant has adequately addressed all concerns raised regarding both applications compliance with the zoning subdivision regulations. The only standard of concern regarding road length, roadway length is presented in this report for consideration and will be subject to interpretation. Hold on. Where am I, no? Interpretation and discretion of the Board of County Commissioners at the time of the scheduled public hearing on August 23rd. E, whether the application is generally consistent with the intent policies and goals of the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan, community resources topic area, goal, water, waste and sewer disposal. New development shall conform to state laws covering domestic water supply and septic systems, which this does. Natural resources topic area, the general environment is the goal here to protect. New development should minimize negative impacts to adjacent agricultural lands and designated open spaces. It was referred to Colorado State Wildlife. Albert County recommends the planning commission make a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to approve the requested Sun Bear Estates final plat subject to the following conditions. The applicant will be required to remove the sign within seven days. The rezoning shall not become effective until all fees are paid and the exhibits are recorded. So it, it relies on the rezoning being approved. Recordation of all appropriate documentation is to occur within 180 days. Provide the Community and Economic Development Department proof of Elizabeth Fire Protection Department fire flow requirements are being met prior to recordation of both exhibits. Make a payment to Albert County for open space requirement, which will be 10% of each lot's appraised value. And then the six is to finalize and sign the subdivision improvement agreement, which is being drafted by the county attorney. This concludes the final plat presentation for Sun Bear Estates, FP 23-18837. Thank you. And here is the final plat.
Okay, um, would the applicant like to add to the presentation?
Thank you for the overview, Danny. Yes, Danny gave again a great overview of the proposed development. We're proposing to subdivide the two existing lots into four lots each, eight lots total. I do want to address further a couple items that were mentioned to kind of expand upon what was discussed with the rezone. what was discussed with the rezone adjacent to Anderson Road. We do have the dedication of a 15 foot easement to Albert County for future roadway expansion, the 15 foot due to the county possessing 30 foot half roadway section to equal 45 feet, 90 foot major collector. We also have a 100 foot buffer along the northern and western property boundary. We did this due to the public comment we received at the community meeting. It currently doubles the setback and this buffer would apply to both principal and accessory structures, so any kind of structure on the property. So, we thought addressing this on the plat would even go a step further beyond the CCNRs by solidifying it on the plat itself. And I do think that with this development, we provide and address the appropriate infrastructure provisions, but I do want to expand on the road comment and cul-de-sac that was made. We do have the Fire District sign off for the 1,500 foot road length. We were actually advised to proceed in this manner back at pre-app by Fire and Public Works due to the topography, due to no secondary access being needed for emergencies. And that's why we ended up designing the road and cul-de-sac the way that we did. My understanding with the new staff, there's, as you're aware, been a lot of turnover, both in planning and Public Works, and now you have a new engineer, which is great. I had a lot of conversations with the new staff as well regarding this and ensuring that we do have the sign off of both Public Works and Engineering on our design. And I'll defer to staff further for that, but I believe it notes that in the staff report. So, I do want to call that out, understanding that the Board of County Commissioners is going to need to approve that. And those are the only additions that I have at this time.
Quick question for you. You said it was on the north and the west, and that's the north end of it, right?
I'm sorry, Chair. Could you move your microphone closer?
The question I've got is that you said the buffer was on the west and the north, and this is the north end, right?
I'm sorry, the north and the east.
The north and the east?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That makes sense then. Thank you. I was thinking it was flipped.
I had the same question.
Thank you. I apologize.
The one other question I've got, well, that's on the screen for you, is initially you had had a plat where it was split right here, but you ended up with the sections coming out like this. Was that to keep the road shorter?
So, that was actually just an exhibit concept for pre-app and the community meeting. So, by the time we got to the community meeting, we actually had this concept and the just basic square one. After talking with Engineering and their surveyor, they obviously refined it to this. But yeah, we never submitted a plat with the just boxes. That was more just pre-application, concept, feedback initially.
Okay, at this point, we can go into public testimony. So, if the three of you would like to speak again, if you'll come up one at a time and give your name and address, and then you've got three minutes to speak.
Hi, thank you once again, David Anderson, 30291, Chisholm Trail. Firstly, I'd like to just make it known that at the so-called community meeting, 100% of the attendees there, which were fortunately, unfortunately, the neighbors aren't here tonight. It's summer. They may be out of town on vacation. But 100% of the attendees there, and there were roughly maybe eight additional neighbors there, were 100% opposed to this. And in terms of my view, I don't hear anything that's being addressed there. I've heard that there's build envelopes for the two north ends and I don't know if it was the two southern, but I would like to see if this is going to move forward. I would like to, I would like the developer to actually involve us and talk to us. The community meeting was not that, nor have I seen. We did receive notification, my wife and I, we had two different notices that we received at our residence for this meeting tonight, but I have seen nothing in writing that addressed the issues that were raised by everybody at the community meeting. So, if those do exist, I would like to have a copy of those.
They're in the application.
Okay. And were those sent to residents or we?
They're online and available to be seen online.
Okay, thanks.
There's a rather extensive document that shows what each person said at that meeting.
Okay.
And there actually was at least one positive comment that I remember reading.
Okay. If that was hyperbole that of all the people, that was 100%, so it's 99. So, I would love to engage with the developer in terms of what build envelopes would be for all of the lots to minimize the impact on what has been a substantial investment for us in our lot, which sits at the top of the plateau that we currently enjoy unobstructed views. So, if this is going to move forward, I would more than welcome, in addition to the buffer, when you're talking 80 acres, 100 feet is a nice start, but it's hardly enough room to really afford us what we currently experience. Sorry, thanks. I think they're going to talk about water.
David Dame, 11707 Anderson Avenue. I guess one concern I have is about the water. I know we've had three neighbors that's had to drill deeper into the Dawson, into the two of them into the upper Dawson, one of them into the lower Dawson. So, I didn't quite follow. Has a study been already done for water availability and environmental impact of this many new houses?
Yes.
It's a state recommendation on it. It's a letter from the state Board of Water.
Well, keep in mind that we're already drilling deeper, having to redrill wells at least three neighbors, you know, within a half a mile, within three or four properties. The other thing is, is there any reason why my neighbor wasn't afforded a 100 foot setback on the Douglas County line? You give the Albert County people that 100 foot setback, but you don't give my neighbor that 100 foot setback, and it seems like respectfully, he should have the same setback on the west side of that property. He only has, I mean, compare, if that's 100 foot, that gray line, that looks like about 25 feet. So, I don't know what the setback is on the west side?
Normally, it's a smaller setback than they put in there on the other two sides.
Because it's a county line and you don't care who's on the other side?
They didn't have to put that setback in on the other two sides. They just.
They just did it for the friendly neighbors of Albert County because Douglas County will actually be the one servicing this. Emergency vehicles, fire trucks, they do all of the servicing out here, so it's good that won't be a burden on Albert County because they don't even come out there. Other than that, I just oppose that many properties being put in there. Another little caveat was you all congratulated her on her dark sky that she said would be in the next projects, not in this project.
No, 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 this project.
No, she said in following projects, we will be addressing that. So, hopefully, we hold them to addressing it here, since I can't even put a light up on my barn. But other than that, it sounds like you guys are all one, so thank you.
Brent Gilley, 11711 Anderson Avenue, Frank County.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank David for bringing up that buffer, because I did take umbrage at that. I mean, it's only on one side in the back. I mean, it really should be all the way around. Now, some other issues that are hanging out there, and I know that you're not focused on it because it's maybe not in your purview, but people are going to buy those properties and they're not going to understand the water issues. They're not going to understand the soil because it wasn't tested. They're going to let each buyer do that for that septic. And let me tell you something, they're going to get a surprise when they test that soil. Some of you may already know that. It's not going to be favorable to them. So, by putting them all like that, that close together, yes, I know, for you guys, it's not that big of a deal, but you're not doing those people any favors at the end of the day because they don't know what they're getting into because the water's a problem, the soil's going to be a problem for those septic systems. There's not a whole lot I can say other than that, but I would like to see that buffer go all the way around. There's no reason that that wasn't done. You have any questions for me?
Not at this point.
All right, thanks. And I hope I have time left. Thanks.
You do, you have a minute and 30 left.
I'd like to reserve that time for the next meeting. Thanks.
Can you yield it to me for one more point?
I'm.
I would love to yield it if it's permissible.
It just addresses the density where these guys made a good point that I didn't think about because I'm on the other side. Thanks.
Brent and Dave didn't address this or address this. I didn't think about it because I'm on the other side, but on the west side of this line are 35 acre lots. So, when you look at similar use, yes, if you look at the east side, it looks to be similar use, but at the top of the plateau, we have just six homes at the top of the plateau on the east side. On the west border is 35 acre lots, is minimum lot. So, similar usage would be in line at a minimum or a maximum would be six homes. At a minimum, it really would be 35 acre lots.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Public testimony is closed. And at this point.
Okay, again, we appreciate the public feedback. I first want to address the buffer. So, again, the buffer is a response to the community meeting attendance. I have a very thorough log of attendees, summary, comments, et cetera. We didn't have any engagement from the other neighbors. However, we're happy to add a buffer no build area on the directions, the west side as well. That's fine. We can do that. It's not a problem. I do want to clarify a comment on the Fire Department. We believe that Elizabeth Fire Protection District will be the one to service this development. We already have agreements in place with them, obviously contingent upon the approval of any development. And I also want to clarify the dark skies comment. When I said subsequent project or future development, I was simply trying to respect the rezone hearing and not get into the final plat comments. So, I was really saying this will be addressed, you know, with the potential project, assuming a rezone. So, this project, that will be addressed. And lastly, regarding water, aware that water is a touchy subject, we do have a decree for the water. Went through that entire process, found that we do have the 300 year water supply and then some for this project, and I would actually like to invite Chris Cummins, counsel, to just, at a high level, make a comment on water from our team.
Good evening, Chris Cummins. I'm counsel for Steve, but I do primarily work in water and water rights.
May I have your address?
Sure. Chris Cummins, 14725 Roller Coaster Road, Colorado Springs. I'm primarily a water rights attorney. That's the bulk of my practice. Steve did obtain for this development a decree from the Division of Water Court, quantifying the water in all five underlying aquifers, approving a plan for augmentation for up to eight lots and augmenting that both during pumping and post-pumping for a 300 year pumping cycle. As you've got in your packets for the application, the State Engineers Office has blessed, if you will, that plan and said it complies with all state regulations and as they can discern all local regulations as well. Certainly, and I live on well and septic as well to a Dawson aquifer well, so I'm sensitive to the fears that people have about Dawson aquifer. I'm sensitive that if some people have to redrill, oftentimes, we see that when people are drilling their wells initially, and this was particularly true in the 80s and 90s, they would drill till they touched water and stop drilling and not fully penetrate the aquifer down to the bottom of the Dawson. Those shallow wells are sensitive to fluctuating water levels, and that's why you end up with people going deeper at later times. So, I'm sensitive to the issue, but it's not necessarily a symptom of a rapidly declining And I'm happy to answer any questions if the board has any.
I have a question. You mentioned just briefly a minute ago, and I read it in the documentation, that the water plan includes augmentation. Can you explain what that means?
Sure. The upper Dawson aquifer is what's called not non-tributary. It's a double negative that some weird lawyer came up with at some point, but it actually means what it says. It's neither a tributary aquifer nor is it a non-tributary aquifer. It's in a gray area where pumping of that aquifer creates some impact to stream systems nearby, but not one gallon for one gallon impacts. But because there are those impacts, in order to utilize the not non-tributary aquifer, one has to come up with a mechanism to replace the depletions that you're creating to nearby stream systems. The mechanism that is typically utilized in these subdivisions and isn't approved in this plan is for septic return flows during the 300 year pumping life to act as that replacement source because they'll be in excess of what that depleting amount is. And then at 300 years, there's a covenant that the owners of the property at that time drill a deeper well to a non-tributary aquifer and continue to pump to the stream systems to the surface in order to replace depletions that continue after pumping ceases.
So, in effect, the actual use is about 2 to 5% of the water after you augment back into the aquifer, correct?
Not sure I quite get your question. In this instance, the depleting factor is somewhere around 20%. It might be 22% of pumping, but the septic return flows from the homes to be built on the lots is in excess of the amount that those depletions are during pumping.
I have a real quick question for you. In a lot of the statements that were made in that blessing of the water, it said the applicant may, should, it didn't say very specifically that eight wells would be built.
Yes. What it does say and what we're including in the CCRs as well is a requirement, and this is in the state's findings, that prior to any uses being made on any of the lots other than in-house domestic uses, there has to be a house on the lot that's creating those septic return flows. And again, that's to ensure that the augmentation supply of other uses is created before those other uses are made.
And to your point there, you're speaking specifically of the house, not necessarily the agricultural need of the land. Is that something that's also covered or considered? I didn't see that.
Yeah, the augmentation plan allows for multiple uses. It allows for uses inside the residences. It also allows for watering of, I think, up to eight livestock per lot as well as landscape irrigation, but that livestock watering and the landscape irrigation cannot occur unless there's already a single family home constructed so as to ensure that replacement water is making it back to the stream.
It also limits the amount of space that can actually be irrigated.
It does. It does. It limits the quantity of water that can be pumped from each well, and it limits the amount of landscape irrigation.
And the wells will be monitored or metered?
They will all be metered. Yes, sir.
Those were my questions that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question for Grace, if I may. For Grace. On the final plat that's up there, is not the same drawing that we had in our packet. And the difference that I see is on that north-south, on the top two lot, the two northerly lots, there's a what looks to be an easement or something. What is that?
Okay, yes, so this is along the same lines as, for some reason, our updated plat wasn't in your packet, but my understanding is you have it?
Yes. Yes, the clerk changed and updated to the correct one, so maybe you downloaded it earlier, and if you look now, it's the correct one in your packet.
So to address the modification, we were requested, so this is after referral, this is what we submitted back, and we were requested, after a conversation with planning staff, to show specifically the envelopes on the back two lots. So what you see on the side there, there are obviously utility easements, but what you're seeing on the side is the setbacks. So the side setbacks in RA are 50 feet, so that's what's being shown. Now, if we add the buffer per comments today, that's going to change, you know, obviously, because that would be 100 foot down the side there. But yeah, that's what's being shown on the back lot, per staff's request, is the setbacks in that envelope.
So essentially, you're showing on the plat what's required in the zoning requirement, which is a 50-foot side yard setback.
In addition to our buffer that we added, so for the restricts that area, yes.
Your buffer essentially just reduces the building envelope.
Correct.
And you've also got, I don't know...
I guess I'm confused at what you guys sent out, because I've got this on my...
Go ahead.
This, yeah, this drawing is on my, yeah.
This should be the correct one.
Yeah.
It also has, if the rest of the planning commission hasn't noticed, these type of lots have an envelope that's cut back in here, because it has to be a certain distance across for the building envelope. What is that, 250 feet? 300?
Yeah, so you have to have a specific lot width, per our regulations, so that additional notation there is to show when the lot is the required width, and then you have a setback from your lot width when it reaches the required width. You have to build your house further back.
Right.
So you're not building right at that corner.
Isn't that 250 feet?
The minimum lot width is 200 feet for this.
200?
Yes.
Okay. All righty, thank you. Okay, we'll close the...
I have one more question for Grace. I was still not clear on the dark sky provision. Are you going to include that in your CCRs for this?
Yes, we are planning on including that. Chris, do you want to talk about that at a high level as well? Is that, you want him to respond to that? Okay.
Grace and I were discussing this during the break. Dark skies showing up in covenants, and actually municipalities and local governments adopting dark sky ordinance is a momentum-gaining trend. Over the past six, seven years, I've probably had a dozen subdivisions that I've been a part of, where we were asked to include a dark sky provision in the covenants. And again, based on where I live, I've got a son who goes to school in Flagstaff, Arizona. Flagstaff's one of the original dark sky communities, and anyone who's ever been there would be astounded to know that there's, you know, 30,000-plus people living in Flagstaff when you go outside at night, because it's inky black. And it's fairly easily accomplished with specific downcast lights and wavelengths of light, so it's, I think it's an accommodation that Steve is more than happy to make it improves the community as a whole.
Any other questions? Okay, if there are no further questions, then we'll close the applicant rebuttal, and we've got a board-only discussion, just among ourselves.
I have a question for staff. Danny, you talked about the subdivision improvement agreement that's being prepared by the county attorney. Do we, does that come to us, or does it simply go to the B.O.C.C.?
That will go to the B.O.C.C., and the subdivision improvement agreements, it's mainly road-centered, to make sure that the road is maintained by the private entity, because the county, at this point, needs to limit the amount of road they acquire, so they're not dedicating road to the county, they have to maintain their road to a certain standard.
Does the subdivision improvement agreement address any of these other items, like the dark sky, or setbacks, or any of that?
No, the setbacks are all represented in the plat and our zoning code. The dark sky agreement is something that I don't know if the county would necessarily want to take on itself, because enforcement might be difficult for us, but I think it sounds like an excellent idea to have some provision that, you know, they should do this dark sky agreement, but I don't know what the county would want to take on in terms of enforcing a neighborhood covenant.
Okay, so it would be in the subdivision agreement, or the covenants, and nothing that county has.
Okay, I have one question. The mineral rights? Who has the mineral rights? That's something that in a subdivision, you need to know who has the mineral rights, because when you're setting it up to build on it, you need to be able to notify the mineral rights owners. And so, who owns the mineral rights?
Good question. I'll have to look that up for you. It should have gone out to referral to the Colorado Geologic for review, and apparently they own their mineral rights.
Is that correct? Okay. Then you don't need to notify yourself?
And those will be passed on to the owners of the new lots? Yes, okay. That's standard, that's standard.
Okay. That answers the questions that I have. Okay, I think there's a couple of things that were brought up that they're going to do, that we could make conditions. The dark sky and the covenants?
I'm sorry, Chair, the microphone, please.
The dark sky and the covenants is one condition we can do, and the buffer on the west side that they've agreed to would have to be in the plat, and would have to be resubmitted prior to going to the B.O.C.C. We've got those two that we can work with.
Along the same lines, on a condition, would we, do we need to say anything about the length of the road, or is that automatic, because it's in the zoning? We don't need to put that...
No, we don't.
The county commissioners automatically do that.
They automatically will look at that. And there's a variance, there's a limit on the variance that they can do, is it what, I mean, there's a normal variance that we can do, I forget what it is, but they can do whatever they want with the B.O.C.C. The B.O.C.C. can do whatever they want on it, so I'm sure that they will handle it when it gets there. So I would entertain a motion for approval with the condition for the dark sky covenants, the dark sky being added to the covenants, and the buffer on the west side to the plat. Would somebody like to make that motion? Kevin? You get to.
You get volunteered for it, right? So in the matter of the Sun Bear Estates final plat, FP 23-18837, I recommend approval of the final plat with the conditions of an additional dark sky addendum to the covenants, and a easement, 150 easement on the west side, sorry, 100-foot buffer on the west side, built into the final plat.
Second.
Okay, seconded by Roger.
It wouldn't be an easement.
No, I changed it to a buffer.
Yeah, buffer zone, yeah.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's been moved and approved, and that ends the Sun Bear Estates final plat, FP-23-188... all right, 18837. And so, at this point, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Wait a minute, is there something else you needed? Thank you.
Thank you. Chris?